We do have quorum. Unfortunately, our mayor is sick today, so, but there are plenty of other people of the city's administration that are making sure everyone is receiving proper services today, so not to worry. We do have quorum, as I said. We don't have to administer the oath today because we do have no guests in attendance, unfortunately, but the public is always welcome to attend the planning commission meetings every other Wednesday, pretty much, first and third Wednesday of the month in the city building. We have no cases today on our agenda, so where we're at is communications. Continuing our discussion from the past couple meetings is the strategic planning for 2010. And where we left that off is at the last meeting, we established, you know, about eight items. And today's meeting, we're going to try to sort of rank them as far as where we're going to sort of fit them on our calendar this year with the goal of, you know, of these having talking points for all of them. If you look at the, your minutes, you can find them, they're like the second page of the minutes at the back of your packet, so we can all follow along. The first one, and this was pretty much in order of discussion at our last meeting, was the sort of historic district recognition, sort of planning and design standards, more or less. Second was finishing up on what the signed task force recommendations were from the year prior. Third, review of planning commission duties, powers and responsibilities, bylaws. Fourth was to prepare area plans in connection with comprehensive plan and code requirements for planning of future projects and developments in Athens. Fifth was a look at developing an urban development code, basically rewrite of our current zoning code. And wouldn't it just be Title 23? The other codes would fall into it and how it basically involves planning and design. So the tree landscape code would go in there, some, you know, when we have that discussion, we'll discuss that, but wouldn't it just be, I guess, a rewrite of the Title 23? Number six would be planning commission coordination with the university, perhaps doing joint projects together. And seven was coordination with the city, I'm sorry, with the city and county. And last on our list, we had was sort of long-term infrastructure planning, sort of in collaboration with the Department of Public Works of the city.
Does anyone want to add a ninth? We don't know yet. Members of the BZA have been contacting me about us taking a look very closely at our parking situation, seeing how over 50% of the BZA cases are parking related. That may come under number five, so.
Yeah, and a lot of these have some overlap, and you'll discover, I mean, what I had sort of proposed, and I had Charlene send these minutes to me earlier so I could get a look at where they might sort of fit in, what we've been discussing currently, and what makes more sense to wait till we have more information to really tackle, is, you know, Charlene has already provided us in this, within this packet, bylaws as basically per state and city code for the planning commission. So it'd probably make most sense if we, you know, would take that home with us and, you know, we could bring discussion points for the next meeting as opposed to this one where I don't think anyone's really had an opportunity to adjust it. So it seems like, again, a really easy one to tackle for our next meeting. Then, you know, it's kind of a toss-up, I would think, of trying to do something that might be relatively easy, and that's the establishing the historic district.
May I jump in on the bylaws really quick?
Yeah.
We did at the planning commission, I believe, last year, the, under Section 3, the part that's highlighted, Ernbold, rather, "To be on the agenda, a case must have all paperwork completed in the office of the mayor by noon on Thursday, a week before the scheduled meeting." These bylaws would have been passed when the planning commission was meeting on a Thursday, for one, so it's, that's to give five days, five business days. We did stay, we did adopt a policy at the planning commission last year specifically in relation to Title 41, site plan reviews, because site planning, site plan reviews do require, or do give the city at least 10 business days in which to review a site plan. So for a site plan specifically, we stated they had to be in two weeks, at a minimum two weeks prior to the next planning commission meeting. So if our next planning commission's two weeks from today, then all documents would be at my office or John's office by Wednesday morning. So that's just a small change there that was, I don't, I've actually, admittedly, I've never seen this document until two weeks ago at the planning commission, but we did make a change on that portion of it.
Okay.
Now, we can still go with a week beforehand as it relates to lot splits, subdivisions, anything like that, that's up to discussion with the planning commission. And I think the minimum two weeks for Title 41 site plan review is needed to make sure that we've fully vetted it at the administrative and given the planning commissioners two weeks to review the projects as well.
Probably PUDs as well.
Well, PUDs are going to require, PUDs might require more time as well, yeah.
So that's something that, at least by the next meeting, you'd be able to put together sort of an item-by-item sort of lead time, you would think, you know?
Yeah, we could do that.
I mean, it sounds like you're pretty close now, but.
Yeah, we could put something together.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's one of the key, it seems.
You mean an item-by-item based upon what is the planning commission's reviewing?
Yes, yeah.
Whether it's a PUD, a Title 41, a lot split, a timeline with when we need the documents?
Yeah, yeah, and I think, and, you know, you probably want to do, if it doesn't fit into these categories, it's two weeks, you know?
Okay.
For default, you know, if you're missing what's not, not mentioned, but, I mean, I think on a lot split, we probably don't need two weeks review time.
No, I don't think so either.
That would make sense. Continuing on on that path is, like, is it historic districts or the, the next one would be signed task, signed task force recommendations? I feel like those two, they could either be done maybe even in concert where we're, you know, started getting the background information on what we need to do for the historic district while we're also discussing the sign. So those two, you know, one's sort of new and one's old business that we can try to tackle, you know, early on in the spring. Looking into the summer, and again, this is all amendable, but it's just a full schedule at this point. Looking into the summer, I feel like that would be a good time to start looking at the urban development code as well as the long-term infrastructure planning on the part of the city. The two, I think, sort of go hand in hand. And if we can sort of start looking at those two items and how we're going to approach that in the coming years, I feel like that would prepare us well for in the fall, sort of determining what areas we want to see plans for, and at the same time, working with the city, or, I'm sorry, with the university and with the county. So I think that's how we would maybe even want to approach these area plans is where we find, you know, maybe, you know, one thing we discussed at the last meeting was the sort of all, the Athens to Albany corridor, that's probably going to be something we're going to have to collaborate with the county. But we can look at what that area might look like if it's annexed. Another, you know, an area plan, say we focus on Mill Street area and Stimson Avenue, that's probably going to be a collaboration with the university. So there might be, again, ways that we can tie these sort of broad concepts together in sort of achievable ways. So that's just, you know, preliminary where I could sort of see these all fitting in. You know, now I'll open it up to the rest of commissioners and see what their thoughts are.
I agree with you about the review of planning commission duties as being the first. It would be a good starting place just to redefine what we're doing here. And I would like to see, I agree with you, I think I would like to see definitely the signed task force just taken up and dealt with, you know, especially since we're entering into prime real estate season, really to get that taken care of so that in the future, I mean, I see more signs going up that are probably displeasing to the city in some way, and I think, you know, at some point, we really need to make that decision so we don't cost these people a lot of money and so that we also have a clearly defined sign statement that the city would, you know, be able to stand behind policy. I think in general, the other things that, the order that you've got them in makes sense.
Okay.
And, you know, I think there's a logical progression to, you know, the other items that you looked at and the scheduling plan that you'd like to present.
Okay. Harry, any thoughts?
Yeah.
This is not even new to you.
I'd like to see the sign study or whatever they were assigned to do, taking care of, because that's been pending for years, and we should settle that. And the linking that you, or these items that you recommend, I think is pretty good.
Okay.
A couple of items, and Andy Stone, who's the Director of Engineering Public Works, has an eight-year plan for infrastructure, and that deals with street improvements, utility improvements, and we can, I can provide that to the commission to look at that would be, kind of go along with the long-term infrastructure planning. And I know there's the Athens to Albany sewer corridor, but in today's newspaper, they're talking about the possibility of ODOT moving out on 50 outside of the city, but again, talking about their own treatment plant, and so that's something that may come to us more rapidly than before, even though it's not in the city.
Would that be ODOT moving from their current location in the city?
Is that, they're at 56 and 62?
Which, again, might be another opportunity for the city to look at. There's been discussion in the past about relocating our service garage and area out there.
Surface garage currently is located on West State Street?
Mm-hmm. And in the floodplain, and in the wellhead protection. But even this current ODOT facility.
That's where the grid's at.
Yeah. It's hard in Athens.
Where do you want that fire station?
But even the ODOT facility has some toe into the wellhead protection migrating area, I believe, so.
So if that would be the case, that would be item, would you sort of, yeah, it's kind of be item five and eight maybe creeping up into the spring if possible, or maybe it just means eight, item eight, the long-term infrastructure planning, we just, we do that pretty early on after we try to get past the, you know, the sign ordinance?
It's something, as a planning commission, that would make a lot of sense, is if we know that we may be doing major infrastructure projects on Columbus Road, for example, maybe that's the time to say, let's plan for Columbus Road. Let's marry the, let's marry the planning with the infrastructure as well, so that we're, we're thinking forward with how we're going to develop down there, how it's going to look.
Right.
Since we may be doing paving work, we may be doing, you know, capital improvements with storm lines or sewer lines or something like that, that's, that certainly would be a good marriage. Mill Street, same type of thing, or if we're doing a major infrastructure project uptown, that would be a good time to do, to kind of take a step back and look at the whole situation of what we're doing in that neighborhood.
Things could come out, it's rather rapidly. We are going to do a Mill Street storm and sewer improvement. I believe it's going to be next year, Charlene, but we're carrying over our CDPG, turn that street around.
So you're talking about moving the long-term infrastructure, number eight, into like the third position?
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
Okay.
And maybe that bumps the historic district. And, I mean, we could still, based on where our discussion is, have a, you know, a little bit more of a step-by-step process that would take. It'd probably be more you, Paul, sort of leading us through that, and probably more sort of questions from us, and then, you know, we could go back to it at a later meeting after, you know, maybe we get, we have Andy Stone come in and give us a sort of a, his layout, his eight-year plan to the commission. So that seems reasonable. So if that's the case, the order would follow bylaws next, at the next meeting, discussion of that, and any change that we think should be made to the bylaws.
Would you like us, me or would the planning commission like to make a request that Andy come in in the near future and do a presentation on his eight-year, just conversation about that with you guys?
Let's tentatively, I'd say the second meeting in May.
In May?
In May.
Okay.
Would probably be, I mean, this is last meeting in March, and we'll have two more meetings in April, so.
Right.
I think, you know, one of those meetings in April is the sign ordinance, and the other meetings, the bylaws, or.
Okay.
Knowing our track record on the sign ordinance, I can't see us breezing through that one, so.
I don't, I think we got the heavy thing out of the way. I mean, I don't.
I don't think so. Sorry.
I want to feel that way, I want to, but I'm going to be optimistic.
Okay.
Spring is here, right?
Yeah. I'm still saying one meeting, we can do it, but I don't think we can do any other. Yeah, forbid a case come up at that meeting, but that's fine if one does, so.
One will be coming up in April.
Okay.
Just so you know.
That's fine. If I see a case, I'm moving that sign ordinance to the next one. So, sorry, please, the, after the sign ordinance won, in the second meeting in April, first meeting in May, we could, I guess we could do the historic district either, you know, in that first one in May would be a good time for an adjustment.
Is the historic district really that prominent?
There's probably not a lot of work on the part of the commission, it's just, I think the planner wants us all.
Most, yeah, most of the work on that is historically, historically in the city, we have, most of that work has been done over the last 15 years, the last 30 years, the districts have been identified. Back in the mid-'90s, the recommendations were made on how to do it using best practices as they were recommended by this State of Ohio Historic Preservation Office. Those best practices stand today. So a lot of this work has already been vetted, it's just, I guess, re-vetting it, and then making possibly the planning commission making a recommendation to city council to move forward with it. I have spoken to a few members of council who, I believe there's interest on, at the council level to do this, not 100% certain though, you know, but there was interest on that, and they, they may be making a request at some point from the planning commission to review it anyway, but I think we need to have that done, I guess, from my own perspective as city planner. I think it's important that we address it.
So, I mean, in a way, it's almost going to be like you're, you're presenting the case for it and we'll make our communication.
I will try, I will try, yeah.
And that, and I think that's how we sort of set it up. I mean, there'll be, again, sort of the give and take, but a lot of the work's already done, and the processing would be done by the planner, not, not on the commissioner.
And if we have a lot to accomplish, we've got to be working on all this stuff, right? We've got to multitask all these issues anyway, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now it's all on you.
Thank you. That's fine, that's great.
Hard work.
I will take that.
So, and again, it would have to do with Andy's schedule, so I think if the first or the second meeting in May, whichever would work better for Andy, we'd like to have him here. And then, so that would put our order, again, is number three would be first, number two, second, number eight, third, and if we can squeeze in number one, sort of in between eight and two, that would be nice, but it's sort of, we'll catch that, but I guess we could.
It may take me, it's going to take me time to prepare something for you anyway.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not saying I want historic preservation on the agenda for the first meeting in April.
Right.
I'm not saying that, so.
Well, that's fine, I mean, maybe then you just, you just give us, you know, a couple weeks' notice when you feel like you'll, you'll have something ready.
That's fine, that's fine.
And we'll, we'll slip it in. And then, after, after we hear what the city's long-term plans are, that would be a good time to start looking at what's, what we're going to have to achieve with the urban development code. And that's something we do want to work very closely with the city council on, so it's all for, not all for none, I guess, with, and I think Nancy Bain is a big proponent of the urban development code, so it might be someone that the commission invites in to see what her, you know, what her feelings are, I guess, what their sort of timeline. We know it's going to be a long process, it's nothing we're going to achieve at the end of this year, but we have to start the process now. And then, after that, we would have the, you know, once we've sort of developed the inkling of what the, what the city's new zoning code is going to be like, we can take a look at these area plans and how it fits in. Now, if we want these area plans to go forward ahead of an urban development code, they have to fit in with the current code as well, so it's going to be a fine dance on how soon we want to get any of these area plans through. And that's where, you know, we might have to be creative with the zoning code and do overlay districts and that sort of concepts in those areas for the time being. And again, I think that's a great opportunity where we can work with this county, like RJ requested, and the university, so.
There had been mention at the previous one, and I don't know the possibility of having an outside consultant review of that urban development.
Yeah, and we, I don't think it's something we can do on our own with everyone's time commitments as they are, us already adding more commitments to the planner's schedule, so I think it's something we do want to bring an outside consultant in, but I think the framework can definitely come from within the.
Yeah, we can, working with the planning commission, I can put together a presentation on potential options for code, you know, what other cities have done, what's happened in the last 20 years, how maybe conventional wisdom on how zoning codes and how codes should, should be written have changed, and we can do, we can do some of that, I think. Once we get down to those specifics, that's where I might be concerned, that I don't want to be, me or anybody else have specific influence over those decisions since we all, we all bring biases to our table, so. But I can, I'd be happy at the beginning of the summer sometime, once, when you guys want to work on that, to put together an hour presentation and slides and all that fun stuff for it.
Right. Well, I think it's, if we can come to a consensus on how we, you know, at least the framework of the code, what, you know, there are, you know, multiple directions out there, if we can sort of choose one, that then we can, you know, select the right consultant that deals in that type of development code, I think that'd be helpful. So it's only going to make, you know, the sort of client relationship much better in that way. So that would be, again, something that we do in the summer, so we'll give, when we see the opening coming in the schedule, you'll have plenty of forewarning to prepare such a presentation for. And then, John's suggestion about the BZA and the parking, because that's what they've been seeing a lot on the variances, you know, I think that falls nicely when we start looking at our development code. And things like that can be a nice thing to do because development's code, it's going to take years, but the sort of thing we can say, well, it sort of fits in this category, but something we can maybe actually accomplish this year, and, you know, we'll have to keep finding those things that work on the bigger picture, but also, you know, give us something that we could sort of celebrate in the end. So I think that'd be something we'd look at that time in the summer, if that makes sense. Any other discussion on our strategic planning? I mean, I don't think we can fit any more in there as far as the big picture. There'll be, you know, little things will come up all the time, so we'll have to save room for those. Any, any other discussion?
That should take care of the agenda for the next three or four years.
You know, I will say that the parking may, as you've probably seen in the newspaper that the university is looking at, is weighing the option of requiring faculty and administration to pay for parking, which they've never done, or they haven't done in, I don't know how long.
They should.
Agreed. You, if that happens, there's, I guess, I've had a few people say, you know, what, how, how might that impact the city of Athens? And Chris Nysley on city council, she's got a parking and parking, bicycling, pedestrian subcommittees for her transportation committee. There has been, through different waves, pushes and requests from the city to look at changing the parking requirements in the neighborhoods, whether we need permits, et cetera, and there's never been a major push on that, but there has been a push from some residents in Athens who would like to see that. But we've never, nobody's ever really felt like there was a critical point where we said, if we don't do this, we're, we have a serious parking problem in our neighborhoods. Now, you know, we might have parking problems in some neighborhoods, but if the university requires parking, I guess, to me, I would presume that there are going to be some people who would choose not to pay for a parking pass and would therefore be willing to walk 15 minutes to their building for class or for work. And so we may, we may see that we've reached that critical mass with parking where we have to do something, or we're getting a major push from the community saying, city council, planning commission, Paul Loeb, John Paskey, fix the parking problem, so. That might be something we're addressing.
Okay.
That would go into effect for fall quarter.
Okay.
And so I think fall by, we might have a pretty good indication by January of next year, February of next year, whether it did create a problem for the city that we need to address through our own parking requirements.
So as opposed to a proactive, we're going to wait and see the impact? I was curious, you know?
Well, I mean, I guess we could, but every time there's been a proactive movement towards changing our parking requirements, there seems like there's enough people that say they don't think there's a real problem, or the 24-hour parking requirements work well enough right now, and it's not a perfect system, but it works. It addressed the initial problem that everybody had, which was storage parking, where people would leave their car on the street for eight weeks and come back and head down for spring break or whatever, so that issue has been addressed, but now, we, I don't know if, I don't know if there'll be a problem or not, but we may get to that point where there's a, a major push towards it, so.
Right. The problem with, yeah, I guess I've just never seen permits used where there wasn't some at least administrative fee associated with them. I mean, I don't think the city has the resources to just issue permits for residents without there being associated fee, so.
Right.
Once you have the fees thrown in the equation, then it becomes a hot item.
Right.
As opposed to simply just permitting within a neighborhood, so, yeah, I don't know, it'd be tough to be proactive and then turns out the university does nothing, and then, on this one. Most I would prefer to be proactive. Okay. All right, well, if that's the case, we'll continue beyond the communications, unless anyone has any other items to add outside of strategic planning in that category. Okay. John, Paul, you've already been speaking a lot, but you can continue that trend here with the reports from the city planner.
Well, the first thing I had was actually just a heads up that the university is discussing a fee for parking, and that that may have an impact on planning or development or parking issues within the city of Athens, but we've already covered that. I've discussed with Chris Fall, the planning commission, or the planning committee chairwoman for Athens City Council, about the possibility of rezoning the floodway area. I will be putting a little bit of information together on that. She did think, and she hasn't specifically stated this at city council, but that maybe we would want to look at, first of all, rezoning of city land that's in the floodway as opposed to looking at rezoning all land within the city that's in this floodway. We do have, especially our parks, a lot of the West State Street park is floodway land, and it's zoned as manufacturing, so maybe that would be one, we, we start with something like that, start with the community center area, make some recommendations to council on a zoning for that, so that may be coming pretty soon. The bicycle and pedestrian plan, I forwarded a link to at least the three of you, RJ, Harry and Nicholas, and I know Paula and the mayor have both seen it. If you have any, if you'd like to give a review on that, comments or anything, please do so, we have the public viewing for that. Review period ends next Thursday, the 25th. That came through the bicycle and pedestrian subcommittee that Chris Nysley has for city council. Most of the recommendations, if not all of them, were fully vetted through the public meetings that we had on it as well as through the survey. All of that documentation is online as well, if you want to see the flow process with how we, how we reached the recommendations that we reached in the draft, so if you have any comments, please provide them to me. Only other thing I have for right now, we do have a project that will be coming through Title 41. This is in relation to the community center solar canopy project that.
Can we pass it?
I can, I'll pass it. I can hold that for you. There may be more documents coming on that. We have it in three weeks, hopefully the next planning commission meeting will be in three weeks, so I'm giving them to you a week early, and there may be more documents coming out in the next five business days. I will make sure to forward those, and Charlene will, will make sure that we've got copies as needed. This is a, I don't know if I'm the best person to speak on the project itself. This is a solar canopy carport over the parking lot in the community center. It is a public-private partnership with a company out of Columbus that does purchase power agreements. They're basically a small solar energy company that makes purchase power agreements with municipalities and other government entities. The installation would be done by a local solar company, Dovetail Solar is doing the installation. It does need to go through Title 41, which is why I'm giving this to you. It's a accessory structure, and I believe the only accessory structures that are exempted from Title 41 are if they are under 1,500 square feet.
Thanks a lot.
500 square feet, something like that. So this is larger than that, so we will be doing an administrative review prior to the planning commission, and I'll provide you with a staff report. It's also floodplain, so we'll be reviewing it for that. And we will have Matt Bennett from Dovetail will be presenting at the next planning commission as well as the gentleman from the, the company out of Columbus that's, that's doing the purchase power agreement. Solar Vision, I believe, you called? If you have any questions about it, since it is, it's a bit unique to what we normally do as a city, feel free to send an email out, we can try to address some of those questions. That's all I've got for today.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the planner? Okay, John?
Just to let you know, there's nothing new on the soundstage ordinance at this time. I haven't spoken with the police chief in a couple of weeks on it, so as I said before, the stage part is done.
I can just give a quick update that a city council committee meeting on March 29th, that the police chief's been invited back to speak to the noise portion and the rooftop.
Okay. And the only other thing is, we're continuing the contractor registration discussion with Kent City Council, which I just want to throw in there because that will affect part of the bylaws of Title 31, building regulations here within the pack that we may be discussing next week, or next meeting. The access for disabled part would probably be eliminated out of here, so...
At what time?
The Title 31 building regulations, access for the disabled, and the part that's being, and the ordinance that's being proposed to council, Title 31's being totally rewritten, and the disabled section is basically coming out of our code the way we have it written now, and we're installing the building code regulation. The building code has adopted the disabilities act as well, so instead of us writing it in there, we'll just go with whatever the state says, so...
It's a lot easier than that one.
Yep. And that's it.
Any questions? All right, thank you. John and Paul? Opportunity for citizen speak, we'll skip that item on the agenda today. Number six, announcements and other business. First item, our next meeting is April the 7th, 2010, where we'll be discussing the bylaws of the Athens Planning Commission. Could be very exciting. And any other items? Okay, last week's minutes were gracefully amended by Paul. Are there any other items? Had a closer view. You had the addition of the long-term infrastructure planning, is there anything else you remember that you added from what was sent out by Charlene or other?
That I asked her to include the, on the signage, the rentals and nameplates, and...
I added the hospital areas for Kerry's comments.
I think she captured them all. Put in your design aesthetics, the review of zoning code for intent and purposes. I think that might have come from you, RJ.
Yeah.
We talked about corridors and gateways, so...
Okay. All right, I knew, can we accept the minutes from the last meeting?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The meeting's now adjourned.